All meeting. In terms of, so we have, everyone here except Walt is not seated, Walt is not seated. And I don't expect him to be seated during the meeting. We didn't have all in a two or three. Uh, I do have change to the agenda to propose. Because of time constraints, I'm requesting that we approve moving item seven point two, the continuation of the extension for the special permit for the Hearthstone Wine Farm and Winery to become item six. And then we will renumber the other other items accordingly. The public hearing will be relabeled item number seven and the special permit application seven one. And the rest of the unfinished business will be labeled eight and eight point one for the specific. Okay, I made that motion. Can I do a second? Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Uh, the minutes above twelve twenty two four, any changes, corrections? I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes that presented. Are looking at the discussion. All was in favor? That is unanimous?
No, stay there.
Go ahead. It's like, I was asking, okay. That that motion passes. Next up is under item six is unfinished business, the continuation of the request for extension of the special permit for section twenty one, twenty five, point four, point six, I.
Just give us number one.
Are you?
Do you know the five? I don't know if anybody's here to speak.
Oh, I apologize. I glossed over I and some citizens. Anything anybody would like to bring up to us? This is not on the agenda. Thank you. Okay, item six. So the continu- continuation of the request for extension of the special permit per section twenty one, point five, point four, point six, I for the Hearthstone Farm and Winery at four sixty eight, root eighty seven. So this is a review, so to speak, uh, of this special permit. And that was a condition of the original approval is that we review it. We were concerned about complaints from the neighbors and things like that. I'm not aware of any complaints whatsoever about noise, about operation, about the quality of the operation. Mr. Taylor, would you like to speak to this?
I think it's probably a point on Walt Taylor. I think it's probably more a point for the Sony enforcement officer. Because it would be a question of our error, any outstanding, there's actually specific verbic about outstanding issues. To do with.
Okay.
And it's actually more specific to the spectral events. This under the spectral event section, but unless there are any issues, I hope that the commission would bring it up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I need to get in the voting for someone sir. I know I've been introduced with the lottery. I haven't been on very long, but there are more left over to me. I've reviewed five.
Okay, thank you. Anyone want to do anything to discuss? Would you like to vote on this? I'll make a motion. A question before you start. Is this um, basically verbatim what we approved uh, two years ago? I can't testify, but John, do you know almost certainly? John?
Yeah, I haven't looked back.
Turn your volume up.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, I haven't looked back at the prior application, but yeah, I would suspect if uh, there was something submitted, it's it's probably identical to what was submitted before, because I believe nothing material has changed.
Well, is it ready to listen?
It it is. Um, I I guess there's it's there have I I personally have misunderstood some points of it. Cause I and yeah, but in honesty, I'm not really feeling really good tonight. Okay, rather than I get to.
I guess, I I mean, I I understand, I I as I recall, I remember the twenty events a year. And I remember the basic size of building and stuff like that. But in here also is permission to construct a storage building. Or to construct a building for future needs for a then catering and food preparation. That that is, that's sort of a blanket approval, but you still have to come for this board. As as a certain affirmative view, yeah, I think. Isn't that right, John?
I I didn't hear the question, the last question you were saying.
In in this, in this proposed permit that we're going to sign, we're going to sign, harvest says it is permission to construct a building for future needs for event catering, food preparation. That's sort of a blanket statement. And the question is, would he have to, would they have to come before this board as part of the special permit to do that?
Yes, because that would be a substantial change to the original special permit, so that would require a new special permit.
If that's the case, why did it in here?
You got me, that that preceded my time. Um, I unless it was just essentially telegraphing something that Walt had had initially requested as part of the, as part of the development proposal. That it was, you know, something of a phase two or something like that, but that that that's going back well before my time.
That's why I'm asking if this is identical to the one provided two years.
Well, let me, let me clarify that. And I'm sorry. I mean, the original, the original proposal, they had footprint for a smaller building in the back, and it was, it was discussed during the public hearing and the application process about a a smaller building in the back um, for 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 future development of of the business. And that was part of my pool. What I'm asking for this evening um, is a piece of that. And that is the the part of my special permit that allows us to do special events. Special events are the section that we're talking about here tonight. Just that piece of my application. So it's probably the entire approval that was granted that you're getting, but as part of that was that little piece that was the special events under that section. If you go directly to the regs.
Yeah.
Twenty one is the section that's called out in the as a as being renewed or.
Renewed.
Yeah, but there's this is that.
Large, large farm, large farm winery private events.
Exactly, that section, the, that's a twenty one by four six. Yeah, that was a piece of approval. It was expected, respectful events, and that's what we're here.
Okay. So would we be extending it for a specific timeframe, or would we be extending it with no further review and? So I thought the diet regulation said two years. I thought I thought it's two years also.
It does.
Is it within our power to to have to follow that that regulation, especially I understand?
You, well, I mean.
We can only approve it for two years.
You could, but you could probably also essentially on a condition, because again, it's a, it's not precisely a special permit, it I, you know, on the condition that nothing substantive has changed and no complaints have been received, you could pre-approve it for the next cycle. I I think that's, that would be legitimate.
But we might look two years. The question is, do we have it stated two years or we approve it for five years? Or without any time limitation?
I I would think it would be some, yeah, I you would, you would want to, you know, at least acknowledge the the two-year cycle in the reg, you know, and and maybe, I don't know, we're we're kind of, we're kind of flying by the seat of our pants here, but you, you know, I would say a two, uh, approve it on a the next two-year cycle, a four-year cycle, something like that.
Okay, absent anything more definitive, I think just if we extended per the regulation that's allowed for two years, I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, and then there's a general discussion about does that regulation need to be updated, which is absolutely.
Yes, now we're gonna waste a lot after we voted. Yes, I hope you'll bring it up.
Yeah, I'm sure. It's already on my.
Okay, uh, that's where this is headed. So I'll make a motion that we approve this per the regulation for the allotted, allotted approval period, which is two years.
Yeah, I'll say.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor? Approved unanimously. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Next up, thank you for your patience, everybody, and we're doing the schedule. Next up is we are moving on our reading mode, public hearing mode, and opening up public hearing for a special permit application of Killingly Engineering Associates LLC for the Kia dealership, divvied two thirty four, root six, for an expansion or modification of the existing structure, map six, slot thirty two and thirty three, a zone DM dash one, lot area eight point two one, and one point eight nine four acres, for the August twelfth, twenty twenty four. And Mr. Claude?
Yes, good evening for the record. I want to kind of put this in place where I'm giving everybody a visual and not blocking you from the screen here. I just do that for a minute. Uh, for the record, my name is Greg Claude. I'm licensed land surveyor. You're losing the battle. Licensed land surveyor, uh, Killingly Engineering Associates with a place of business at one fourteen Westcott Road in Anderson, Connecticut. Uh, and I represent the applicant on this application tonight. And uh, so the property, as we know, is located at uh two thirty four, root six. Uh, this is the Columbia Ford Kia building. Um, I've got a color drawing here in front of you. Uh, it's been a dealership here since going back to the eighties. Um, presently Ford and Kia exist in one building. Uh, this has been an ongoing uh, process with Kia. Uh, corporate Kia for over eleven years that I've been kind of working in the background on this, but uh Kia wants to be separate from the uh, the Ford dealership, their sales uh, showroom. So that brought forth uh, the proposal that we have for you tonight. Uh, which is to build a separate showroom uh, for the Kia dealership, and we would be building it to the left of the existing facility that's there now. We have uh it'll be in the area that's already part of paved. It's where a lot of the cars are displayed on this left side. The lighter orange that you see here is the existing Ford dealership. This would be the proposed dealership. Uh, it will be just sales and showroom uh, that's in here. Uh, there is a service entrance uh, which will be just a service counter, basically with a garage door, which is typically you see on most dealerships these days. People dropping off cars for service will pull into here. There's a counter. The service will not take place in this building. The service will take place in the existing service in the existing uh, building already. Uh, there's also another wing to the back of the building that you see uh, on the east side of the uh, building. That is going to be a new a new delivery area. So basically, there'll be a car when you're there to pick up your car and you get your photos, uh, and you drive your new car away. Um, we've laid out how parking will be with this. Uh, basically upfront is still going to remain uh, display areas. Uh, we are providing uh, parking immediately in front of the uh, showroom building and immediately in the in the row before that, too, uh, will be parking in back. We're gonna just have parking for uh, more display vehicles, uh, because we are going to display what, displace what vehicles are here. Uh, there's opt, there's ample room on site to do that. Uh, this building will displace uh, some of the pole lighting. So with with the grading and stuff that we have to do here, the lighting will be taken down and we will be proposing uh, new lights for uh, the facility. I'm going to just kind of go through the site ones as we have.
Is in lighting location.
Yeah, I'll I'll go over that. Yeah, I'm I'm kind of getting to do it better myself. I'm gonna go through the management better. Uh, this is the existing conditions plan to show is the existing layout. We have a total of ten acres. There are two parcels that are here uh, that we're providing. We show all the utilities on here. So presently, there are, I believe, like six pole lights that are out there, uh, and I've got the underground electricity traced out of where it is. Uh, we have a storm drain system that runs down here. Everything from the parking lot right now, there are it 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 goes from the building to the east. There are three catch basins that pick up all the existing drainage and then dump it into uh, the brook that flows out here. There's a a discharge area for that. Septic system for the existing building is way in the back. It's pumped up. Uh, but that's how the existing lays out. We turn to sheet number three. Uh, this is basically going to be our general plan showing what's to be removed. We have two phases. Initially, we're gonna cut the pavement and saw cut. The interface that you see here is phase one. Uh, that's going to be the immediate area of the building when we move uh, the underground electricity. At that time, they'll probably put a temporary line to keep the lights up. They don't have to come down at that point. Uh, but the plan is to saw cut just an area about twenty feet around the existing building. So that to be able to construct it, we've got a fence, uh, a construction fence that will be put around it uh, with a gated area on the left side. That way uh, we can keep it safe and while the business is still open and still operate. Uh, and then the second phase, the outer one, that will be the final phasing. Once the building's at a point where uh, they can put the static system in and then they can do the grading that needs to be done around it. So that's basically a demolition plan.
And the base implicit question, so um, they're adding additional subject capacity?
Correct.
Okay, over on the extent?
No, I'm gonna go over that next with the site plan. So that's one of my next things I've got to do. Uh, then we turn to the next sheet, and that is the site plan. I'm probably going to go back to the color up because that is the site and it's a little easier to show. Uh, so again, the proposal here will be for the parking that we talked about. We do have new, two new pole lights that will be up front, and then there are three more pole lights that will be in the back, and they are shown. There's a lighting plan that comes back, and there are also a few building model lights that will be there, but I'll go over that a little bit more deal in a minute. Uh, you know, we're still, we're not changing anything to do with the entrance. Uh, we are going to still continue to be able to drive around as is done now. This is the cover of the walkway. Uh, that's going to basically connect the rear door of the existing facility to the front side door of the new facility. There is a possibility that that might not happen, but we're showing it now, uh, but if it costs too much at the time, and it will be tall enough for vehicles to get on them, but that is part of the proposal that the client wants. Um, I'm gonna switch now to the static system plan. Uh, actually, before I do that, I'm gonna go over a little bit of the drainage. Uh, so we have basically a couple of roll points that flow across, and they flow directly to these catch bases. There's three of them, kind of valleys in the pavement, if you will. Uh, we're going to be parking this building in one of those valleys. So we are proposing a new catch basin here to connect that. We're raising the grade around this building because we have to flatten it out. Right now, there's a slight percent, you know, one percent pitch to uh, to the east, and because we're going to lift that building up, it will create sort of a low point here. So the plan is to pose a catch basin here in the middle of that low valley. That will pipe over to the existing pipe uh, that's underground and manual will be installed at that point to tie that in. Uh, the other thing that we are doing as part of this design is we are going to take the roof water uh, which is a clean water, and we're going to put that into an underground system uh, that will be able to infiltrate that. It is good soils out here as as it tested by our soil testing. So we're going to take that clean water and rather just to let it go directly into the brook, we're going to try to infiltrate some of that back into uh, into the soil. Uh, there will be an overflow, obviously, for bigger events or when the ground is too saturated, uh, and it will go. Currently, everything just goes into these catch bases and into the brook. Uh, there's a lot of riprap down there in the corner with the outlets. So we thought that that would be a good idea to try to give a little bit back uh, to what we're doing instead of.
Will the infiltrator redirect to the the catch basins?
Yes, that's correct.
Down to the.
Yeah, it it will tie into the catch basin right here.
Okay.
Um, and and that, and again, that's that's to handle the roof water only that will go into that.
Did it go on to the same, the diet?
So this sheet shows the set of the design plan. This is kind of a unique site where it's been cut into the hill in the back and then filled up front. So kind of the middle is the only area where we're kind of getting existing grade, but the soil testing did go uh, good. We're gonna be putting in a set of tank. And the septic system will be right in front here. There's the existing well of the whole facility is up front. Uh, we will be running a new pump in that well and a well line up to the right and into the, into the, the new dealership. Currently, there's a line of water line that goes into the existing showroom three, three years as well.
I mean, you're.
I can, sure, yeah. So, you know, so there's our septic system. Here's our well up front. This is our old well line into the building.
What's the difference, the difference from the wealth of the product?
Uh, so my seventy five were radius is right here, so it's about probably almost a hundred feet or more to the septic system. And uh, in regards to the septic system, we we are, uh, we did have Eastern Highlands here in the process of reviewing it. Because of the amount of employees here, which is over thirty, uh, we're required to do, it's it's a public well. So we're being reviewed by the state uh, health department as well. Um, and I do have some correspondence to provide to the commission. So we did get I've got a, I've got a letter here or an email from Eastern Islands. It was from Glenn Bagdolian. Uh, and he 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 quotes it saying uh, that the uh, in regards to the septic design plans reviewed for the proposed septic for the new uh, showroom looks good and is okay for a basis of design. Before we can issue a final approval, uh, they need a response from the state drinking water division. So they're waiting on the state of Connecticut Health Department Drinking Water Division. I also have an email here from Manny Smith uh, who is supervising the environmental engineer uh, for the uh, branch of the state drinking water system. And basically, her email is telling us uh, they're going through a uh, a change in the way uh, that they do their their thing. So there's, I'm trying to think of it. She she wasn't able to get us anything because their public water supply screening form process is going through an internal um overhaul, and we are currently working with the PPH legal office on the process. So they're having trouble with what they do on the computer. So we're kind of in a holding pattern. Uh, but she does go on to say that Norm Tebow, who is our engineer, killer engineer, asked if she thought there would be a problem, and she said, no, I do not. Uh, the population use is not changing, just the number of buildings. So all you are doing is notifying us of the change, but really it's the notifying process. Uh, I'm in the hopes that, you know, this will be enough uh, that if you guys are in favor of approving this, that it could be conditional upon these things being finalized. We just wait, it could be a couple more weeks, could be three weeks, we don't know. Um, we've been going around with it for about five weeks with them right now, and it's not getting anywhere with it. So I'm going to submit these emails to the record, uh, for the record. Uh, and the other thing that I wanted to do before I got into this, I should read the statement of use. We're 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 supposed to provide a statement of use in, uh, this is even eight, seven, twenty twenty four, Ford Gabriel T L L C has submitted an application to the town of Columbia planning a zoning commission to permit construction of eight thousand three hundred and ninety six square foot Kia showroom, the origin of the property that is currently paved and utilized for vehicle display. The application is submitted in accordance with section thirty one, point two, point six of the town Columbia zoning regulations as a permitted use subject to special uh, standards applicable and to the use outlined in section fifty two, seven, five, said regulations. Uh, to that end, this statement of use is presented. Uh, the proposed building will be utilized exclusively for sales, showroom and service drop off. Servicing will be conducted in the service department of the existing building. Soil test that has been conducted with the Eastern Highlands Health District and soils were determined to be suitable for onsite septic disposal. Uh, the plan shows the septic design and has been submitted to the district for review. As previously stated, the area where the building is proposed is to be constructed, is currently paved. By replacing this pavement with a building, it is often an opportunity to, is offering the opportunity to infiltrate clean roof water into the well drained soils. Accordingly, we have included calculations and design to infiltrate groundwater recharge volume as recommended by the Connecticut D E E P Stormwater Quality Manual. No additional impermeable services will be added. Therefore, peak runoff rates will remain the same. Down gradient properties will not be impacted. Excite, existing lighting will be repositioned and provided in a safe and secure facility to deter vandalism and theft. Lighting will be selected. Uh, lighting that is selected will be dark sky compliant. Hours of operation will not change from that that currently exists. And I did look up on on the website right now, their sales hours for the showroom are eight, uh, Monday to Thursday, eight to seven thirty P M. Friday is eight A M. to five thirty P M. Saturday is eight A M. to five P M. And Sunday they are closed. Again, that's for sales, which is all that will be going on here. Uh, I would also like to add to the commission, we're not adding any new employees. Basically, the people that will be uh, that are already running Kia in the other one, they have their separate uh, the the sales associates kind of do both, but some of them will be positioned over here, but as far as the management groups uh, and the underwriters that that do all the work, they will be positioned over here as well. The service uh, people will be positioned over here, will be moving over.
Could you explain what dark sky compliant means for everybody?
Uh, yeah, just basically, um, I will show you the lights. We'll switch over to the this is the uh, sheet number six, and it's our layout and landscaping. So basically, we're providing uh, hooded lights that will not shine any lights in an upward direction. Uh, and again, I I think I stated where those would be. Um, Kia actually has a pretty good program too, because they actually mandate that they will come out and they will look at what's happening at the existing facility. They like to keep it of a similar nature. They don't like to come in and put brighter ones than what are already allowed. So it's part of their program that they're doing. So we're doing this dealership. We're also doing a buttoned dealership, the same applicant. Uh, so we can show their proposed things.
Yeah, one of the reasons this is a special permit application is because of it's uh, adjacent to residential uses.
Right, the residential zone behind.
I said, I want to make sure that we're addressing whether or not there's going to be any light bleed off on the adjacent property over and above what's there, or at least be compliant.
No, we're not, we're not moving the lights any further back. The only reason why they're getting moved is because of basically a little bit of grading changes. The ones that are there are older poles, but they're newer lights that were put on. Uh, but Kia has their own heads that they design in there. Like I said, they they kind of come in and they take readings of what's going on in the in the area, and they like to keep it so that they're not creating more light.
So is there any dumpster locations of this building, or is it a shared dumpster?
There's a shared dumpster, and that is currently directly behind uh, the main facility.
All right.
And then the uh, the rest of the plan, there really is site details, uh, landscaping of the islands, and there'll also be planters up front on the uh, paved area or sidewalk portion of it. Uh, the one change I did bring, change plans that I'm submitting for the record tonight that have a revision date of today. Uh, and that was for Commissioner Powell. I know you had an email uh, regarding parking. So we had calculated the parking calculations for uh, kind of just the sales space. There's nothing in your regulations specific in parking for automobiles. So we kind of took basically the the uh retail area, but then he brought up about office. So we did add that to our thing, and we're providing eight additional spaces, which we that would be that here. Um, uh, that are that are over the line, and I added that to our parking calculations.
So those wouldn't be on the eleven by seventeen?
No, they wouldn't be on the ones I do have full size plan that I draw up tonight, if you want to see them, uh, that I can distribute.
On the, yeah. This outline is the changes from what you was submitted to what is on the.
Sure, yeah. So the only thing is this was uh, display spaces before. We've now brightened and showed them as parking spaces. Uh, and then uh, we changed the actual parking calculation with it right here, and we added, and I'm sorry, this is the color up, it doesn't have that, okay, yeah, cool, sorry, going those. So we revised onsite plan itself. Uh, we added, we had the one space for three hundred for retail. We had one space for five hundred for office, which uh, added another eight spaces to it. So twenty three are required and twenty three are proposed, and two of them will be handicapped right in front. Uh, so uh, that's uh, that's the proposal. Uh, that's the only changes to the answer, one you have before you. And I do have full size copies that I brought with me tonight. Uh, the only other thing that I can show that mentioned is I'm gonna have we do have a rendering near after all the new details. So that's what the new showroom will look like. They do have a height of twenty two feet, uh, which is underneath your regulation allowance, but we're trying trying to lower that. That's in uh, it's just for one story. That's kind of high, and we just think it's a lot of waste. So the the owner is working with them to maybe possibly lower that height. Uh, this is what it looks, it's a glass opening, a black facade up top. We are not applying for any of the signage at this point. Uh, the contractor is going to do that when they come in for their building. They're going to size the signs based on your regulations, and they will uh, uh. For the building, they're gonna size the signs based on your regulations, and they will, uh, they will apply for the signage permits. Uh, and again, these are the, it's the uh. Front view, inside views, building. And then we have floor plan and the layout, shows basically showroom, customer area, some service lounge. Uh, and then offices, and again, this is a, a, a service reception. Uh, and over here was the photo booth and then the new vehicle, uh. Area where they leave off.
Okay, so the only changes to this point versus the one dated August eighth are the calculations and layout of the parking.
Correct, yeah. And with that, I'll turn it over. For the commission for any other commit, uh, questions that you have.
Just, uh, and yeah, what, any questions from the commission, comment, and in our package, do we have a floor plan?
I believe that was submitted, it's, 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 yeah. It should have been, yeah, it should have been the last couple, there should have been floor plans and elevation, and some elevations, yeah.
Okay, so, so you imagine that they haven't decided what the height is gonna. So that, that's part of the approval process, is you need to tell us what the height's gonna be.
Well, it's at twenty-two feet, it's, it could be low.
They'll wear in the documents to show that.
I have it on my other side. I have, well, I have, I have less than forty, forty is what's required, we are less than.
Tell us, yeah, it doesn't tell us specifically about the heights.
Well, twenty-two is the proposed design right now. Which is, which is, just to give you, the building next door to it is twenty-one feet now. It is.
I looked for it on the elevations.
Yeah, those. Elevations from them, but I did get documentation from Kia.
Um, on sheet, um. Uh, three. We did your property sheet here.
Yeah.
The dark, the whole dark area is gonna be fenced in.
Uh, so the, the, basically you see the, uh, the dash line here, that will be the fenced in area during number one.
Okay, and what's this shit, other shady area?
That's the phase two, when they have to put the paving down, at that point, yes, they will fence in that section.
Okay, when we do that. You still have to provide a hundred percent access around the four ditch.
Yeah, they may have to do, they may have to do that in, in the, in the kind of a phasing form, uh, when it gets to constructing.
Okay, uh, what I'm concerned about is parking along the.
Right here, yeah.
Right in there, I'm not so concerned with the parking, but there is the handicap parking space that is there.
Uh, there's no handicap here, there's no handicap here, the handicap is up front.
There's a handicap shown on my plan.
Not a nice other zone.
Right here. On this, on this thing.
Unless you're looking up front there. That's not, no, that's a number, you've got such a small copy, and I apologize. So that's a, that's a number, this says the number ten, there are ten.
Oh, okay, and the crosshatches with.
It's, it's, there is an entrance that you can walk in, and this is all pavers in here and my hands. Yeah, so the handicap, okay, that's okay, definitely, it is just a circle area.
You know, the other thing, as far as wells concerned, um. If you were to connect the two buildings, then it would be considered one with, could you use?
Yes, so we're allowed to put a second motor or second pump motor in the well. Uh, and that is the plan, is to put a second motor down in the well. And then you were done with the well, correct. Correct.
I mean, that's, sort of like, is the only advantage of having that.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, it's high enough for a ve- ve- vehicle.
Oh, no, that, no, we would actually put it, this existing well is up front, and so the plan is to put another motor down there and have a separate well line and tank.
Oh, okay.
No, no, that's the existing one. Okay, great.
So the septic plan that we have, um, just says that the building height is less than forty feet.
Right.
Would be any, uh, challenge if we said, I would, as a commission of approval, not put C twenty-two feet?
No, I'm happy with it, I, okay, that's their design. We're just trying to get it a little lower, only because it's such a weight of energy, and you know, and. For one let, one story, it's, it's a lot of. Hope it pays inside. Yeah.
If you want us to, we consider time, time of approval.
I'll, I'll let them, yeah, I'm, I'm good with the twenty-two.
Any other questions from the commission, I don't, I don't have any questions from the public? If you'd like to, um, uh, ask questions, I'd ask you to just state your name and your address for the record, so that, for record of it. And so.
I'm Mark North, I live at thirty-five, Arizona, well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason, too, what's going on? Just a couple of verification.
Any questions that you can direct into the, to the commission, and then the, the, we'll give the application a chance to respond.
Yeah, about the lighting, all of the lighting is gonna be changed?
Yes, you're asking if all the lighting's gonna be changed, or just those three light, uh, locations that were identified as being repositioned?
Yes.
Okay.
Because lighting is there all the time, and if you like the front backyard. Other times.
So we got, it, 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 it goes offsite?
Yeah, I mean, it like the front backyard.
Okay.
So, I, if it's the new, what you're saying, and the new style, and that. Takes care of it, and they're all that way, then that's fine, but I don't know if they're all gonna be that way.
Um, if you have other questions, why don't you get them on the table, and we'll try and get them all to answer them once.
Yeah, okay, the. Most of all new cars that are there now, there's still to be, where they're gonna be put, since the building is put in, there's a lot of vehicles there. New vehicles, where are you gonna put them? And the existing pavement that's there now, that can be changed, we're gonna go. I know there's, um, on a model land behind mine, there's two strips of land. And there's a bank in there, is that, let's say the bank. Okay. And I think the last thing, it, it's just kind of something that's come up over time about those security issues. One point in time, I was talking about putting a fence behind the old property. And that has never happened, you know, over the years, we had. State police knocking on my door, people stole bumpers or tailgates, whatever, cut through the woods and whatever, they wanna look at my garage. They wanna look around properties like. But, you know, that. That was one of the things, one point in time, it's gonna be a fence in the back, so prevent people from cutting up through. Okay, but you've never saw any evidence of that either, so. Just a couple of questions.
Okay, Chris, try and get some answers.
Yep, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Block.
So, um, i- in regards to lighting, so there are currently six lights. Three of them are back, the north property is right behind us here. So those three lights will be replaced with the three newer lights. They won't be any closer to him, they're in the same general vicinity, we relocate them so they're not in the middle of aisles.
Any change in the technology to have less light spread?
Yeah, like I said, there are, there is a lighting plan that, and, and what I was talking about, the star sky compliant lights, these will, will be. I don't know what's out there for lights now, I do know I heard that they're newer heads, they're L E D, but I don't know what the specs are on them.
There's no way to know whether there's gonna be less light spread, so there's less light bleed on the neighbors with the new lights versus the old lights.
Right, what I can tell you is that. Program that is put out there by Kia is to measure what's there and try to stay what, what's. Current in the neighborhood and not to do it, but we will make every, uh, effort not to. Have any light spilling onto and off of the property.
That, that doesn't sound really definite. So, but the new lights are no closer to his property than your.
Correct.
And we don't know the specs on the current lights, whether the dark sky are aligned.
I don't believe they are, I just know they're newer, I don't, I, I think they're.
Cause he should explain the dark sky standard to us from a technical standpoint.
I'm not too familiar with what the, the standard technical is, I just know that respecting what's in your regulations, uh, and, and. They will be designed so that we're not spilling any light on the, the neighbor's property. Yeah, that's, we, and I can make sure that we have, and if you wanna make that. As part of the condition, we can certainly make.
I'm gonna, I would, I would say, Commissioner, what their pleasure is, I'm comfortable with your explanation.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's, that's the, the, the effort that they put together, and I should have brought their lighting plan that they had. Uh, but they, they do have very specifics of what they wanna do as far as.
Just having on the record during our meeting now that they're not going to spill out to the neighboring property. I'm comfortable with that level of assurance from you, that way, if the neighbor has a concern once they're up. Could be a matter of repositioning, and they can approach you and say, hey, by the way, this was in our record. We need to address this, it's, it's an issue.
Yeah. And there is no changes proposed to the uh buffer of vegetation that is in the back of the property, that will remain the same as will the grass area.
So there's no.
There's no, no fence there now, and there's a slope, we actually go up probably two, four, six, eight, ten, about twelve feet. From our pavement up to his property line, or actually a little bit more by the time we get back there. Um, so there's no changes planned for any of that. Um, uh, I think the other question was in regards to parking of cars. I do have photos, I mean, that show what a typical day looks like on the site, these are Google photos. They are from this year, I will, I will hand out a couple of these.
So we go full lot, in essence, about ninety-five percent full.
So, we, yeah, and, and looking, and, and looking, this is, this is during business hours, this photo had a date of when it was taken, so. It's this past March, it's a Monday, the Monday. Uh, based on where the sun is shining, uh, there is ample room. For when we're building, I mean, he does have this back area here, where it's just all gravel, he may have to put some of the newer cars back there. Uh, other, other ones would be tightened up in the areas where they are.
So you're, you're gonna lose some total display parking space here, because.
Not as much as you think, I've already, I did the numbers for you, so what's shown in this photograph. Represents a hundred and sixty-five cars, I'm not counting the cars, by the way, along the edge here. There and the front, because those are not getting displaced, but all the ones on the side of the current building. That go through the middle, they, they're these areas that you see on the photograph. That represents a hundred and sixty-five cars. What I have here for parking spaces, including what will be in the showroom, and what will be these two spaces up front here. Are gonna be one fifty-three, that leaves us short about seven cars. So seven cars, and obviously, different times of the year, there may be more cars, there may be less cars, depending on the market. Uh, but there is ample room in the back, if you look at the photograph, there's a lot of open space back here for cars to be spaced. Park, I think I counted well over thirty spaces empty in this view, not counting. Uh, public parking, but counting areas for display. So we do feel, thi- this one's a much better situation than my other project input. Just so you know, but, uh, I do believe we have the space for the, for the cars to be parked here.
And so there'll be no, uh, cha- changes to the pavement other than what's required.
Correct, just where we're bringing up the pavement a little bit, and, uh, repaving it, and that's more for grade changes than anything.
And, and so, no offense.
And I don't recall the fence, I mean, over the years ever being, I mean, I've been.
I don't even remember the back down.
I think the last time we were before the board was some eleven years ago, was for this warehouse story back here. Um.
Yes. Uh, anything else from the public? And mission numbers?
Yeah, I, I didn't get the gentleman's name, um, regarding this.
Mr. North?
Regarding the police coming to your house, how many times has that happened?
It happened a dozen times.
Over.
Hmm, it hasn't been, probably four or five years now since that has happened.
So five is good time?
Yeah.
Yep. Just curious.
Yep.
That's, it is a problem, that's why they have the lighting, they tried to put video cameras up, it's, it's not just here, it's probably every dealership, I know we have problems. Uh, in this platinum dealership, somebody lit one car on fire before, so the. People do what they're gonna do, it's, it's unfortunate.
Uh, I'm, I don't, I mean, John, you have a question? Thoughts?
All right, uh, no, I just, just to, to verify, um, Greg, what, did you, you dropped, you submitted. Uh, email correspondence with the relevant, um, health district people?
Yeah, so it just came back today.
Okay. Um, yeah, well, I, I. Yeah, go ahead.
If we, we propose to approve this, I'll propose approval subject to. Um, approval of, of any needed conditions by the Eastern Highland Health District.
Right, I think that's, that's right, and I would, I would recommend. Um, a, an additional note on that, that if, if. The, the health district comes back with any site changes. Uh, meaning if they need to relocate the septic system, uh, you know, somewhere different than what they're showing. That they should come back and confirm it with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. You know your. Reducing the number of parking spaces overall, you still have to go over state traffic?
No, so these aren't parking spaces, um, uh, these are display areas, so we're not opening apartments.
Just two hundred.
Right, right. And in, just to further what, uh, John Gaskowski was saying, uh, I believe if you look, the, the, uh, Eastern Highlands did say that. He's happy with everything there, he's just waiting for the state, and the state's waiting for their system to be updated. So, in theory, they're kind of approving it, but it's just preliminary at this point. So we don't anticipate, I'm okay with that language that he would ask to be prepared to it.
John, when you hear a motion made, just if you, if you think we need to tweak it a little, tell me. Um, anything else from anyone? So I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing, second. Oh, it's in favor. That's unanimous. Uh, so, from that, we were, go back to our regular meeting, and under, under percentage business. Now number eight, come one, respectful permanent allocation by Hilliway Engineering Associates L L P for the Kia dealership at. Two thirty-four, zero, six, for an expansion slash modification of the existing structure. Math six, lot twenty thirty-two and thirty-three, film P M dot one, lot area eight, point two one, and. One point eight nine four acres, received August twelfth. So I would make a motion that we approve this site plan application as presented, subject to. Um. Approval by the Eastern Highland Health District, with the caveat that if there's any site plan. Changes required by the Eastern Highland Health District, that the. Applicant come back for approval of those changes prior to construction. And the building height is to not exceed twenty-two feet, the proposed new building height. That, sound good?
It's good.
Sorry, okay, second, any discussion, both in favor? That's unanimous, approve it, thank you, Mr. White.
Have a great time this evening.
Thank you. Okay, no new business. Correct, um, yeah. Yeah. Uh, and I think Justin's getting. Uh, no, regular, regular revisions, I think that our subcommittee has been getting, uh, get back on track on very regular meetings. We're looking for ideas from the public, just to throw it out to the public, any regulations that. Can be made more efficient, more logical, smaller. We're all ears on that, uh, same to, obviously to the commission member. Uh, direct all of that input to Justin, if any of you wanna be on the subcommittee, let us know. Um, we got a lot done, we're, we're gonna get a lot more done, we wanna take all those parts of our regulations that. We wonder why they're, they're verbalized the way they are, and make them more clear, and then adjust, address certain things like. Uh, ju- just address things that have been nagging issues, like we did, like they were the last round of. Regulation changes. Uh. Communication reports. Uh. Capital Region Council of Government Proposed Plan of Conservation Development, have you reviewed that, John?
Um, I've started reading through, I haven't, I haven't finished, uh, my read through yet.
Why don't we take notice until you can give us a thumbs up on it?
Okay.
So we'll defer this to our next meeting.
Great.
Me, uh, commission open discussion. Uh, just as a follow up to the primary complication and renewal. Um, Justin, can you, as part of your subcommittee, add?
Yeah.
Is there limiting time limits on?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. We had kind of, I mean, you guys just left me, and it's a little discussed about that. And that is definitely on the radar, ready for that.
I mean, I, I was here when we did that, and that was a brand new. Section. Of, of the, uh, regulations, so I think that's why we were trying to test it, right, and it feel really. I don't, I think it's an encumbrance for the property owner.
Yes.
That it doesn't need to be there. Um, if somebody wants to sell a piece of property, for example, that's, some, that, that requires me to go with it, there's only two year.
It's exactly, yeah, it's exactly what I did, but you expressed my sentiments. It doesn't make a lot of sense, right, yeah, no, I, I agree, that's gonna be on the list for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
No, do you think from anyone? Thank you, audience of citizens, anything else to bring up? Are throwing enforcement officer, you're not formally on the agenda, but. Anything, any revelations in your first month and a half on the job?
Um, no.
I don't need to put you on the spot.
I have a special permit, eight for the winner. Nothing.
So we would love to see a spray paint on a periodic basis from you. Um, we would just have an idea of what's going on, we really wanna hear from you. What we can do regulation wise to make your job easier. You know, and, and where you feel there are problems with our regulations. You know, and and where you feel there are problems with our regulations, where you're encountering an issue. That it makes no logical sense to you that we're trying to, if it's on the books, you have to enforce it, but. You know, and and we did address some of that with our latest round of regulation changes and that input could come straight to us and it can also go straight. To Justin, he said that the regulation change subcommittee. However you want to do it. We're not very formal about it, but we really appreciate that you're here tonight.
Yeah, thank you for being. Yes, thank you.
Um nothing in executive session. So that leads us, I'll make a motion with your second, all is in favor. Unseen ends. Thank you very nice. It was quick, quickly, quickly one minute.